To call this meeting to order. Treasurer, take role.
Colonel Orvitz.
Here.
Mr. Grozan.
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig.
Here.
Mr. Miko.
Here.
Mr. Neso.
Here.
All present. Stand for the pledge. Pledge of wills?
Give the flag of the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, district goals. At this part of the meeting, we talk about our district goals. Our number one goal is student achievement. Our second goal is financial prudence, and the third is community engagement. Everything on all of these agendas in all our voting will reflect those three goals and the balance of those three goals as we work diligently to accomplish them and do the best we can. With that, that takes us to public comment. Seeing none, we're done with that, and that'll take us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. We do have a series of presentations for the board tonight, and we're going to kick it off by having our operations manager, Steve Brechner, come up to introduce our first presenter in presentation. Steve?
Good evening, everyone. At this point, I want to introduce Allison Graban. She's here from School Dude. Her official title is Inside Sales Manager. She will be talking to you about a portion of School Dude that we're interested and is up for you to view and discuss, to purchase, as a part of the School Dude suite that we already have, Maintenance Direct. This is the preventive maintenance module that would go with the system that we have and interact with that, and Allison could tell you more about that as she does her presentation. Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening and happy Friday Eve. I appreciate the board's time this evening. As Stephen said, I'm Allison Graban. I'm an Inside Sales Manager with School Dude. So, to introduce myself, what my role is with School Dude is I help the public K-12 sector navigate through roadblocks and help them define what success looks like for them now and down the road. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting information about how Strongsville City Schools can future-proof their facilities with a preventative maintenance service. To introduce you to School Dude, in case you're unfamiliar with us, we serve over 9,000 educational clients and 1.5 million professionals and 37 million students. We have over 130 clients in Ohio. Our discussion this evening is based on a culmination of our unique perspective into these 9,000 data points. So this really gives us inside knowledge at its best. So these data points represent best practices, feedback, and track success from our clients. We cultivated this information into our business intelligence tools. These tools couple your data with the collective wisdom of our clients, and this delivers actionable insight right down to the equipment level. So this empowers you to anticipate your needs, take actions before problems occur, and efficiently manage your resources. So the big caveat here, and this is going to be a running theme for us, is that the decisions you make from this data are only as good as the data you enter. The end goal is to have accurate data to make better decisions now and in the future. So what I'm prepared to share with you is a new way of thinking about how to maintain your equipment and facilities. So this is the maintenance cycle that we typically see, and this is a run-to-failure model. Nothing changes at this approach until there's a catastrophic failure. So a failure is a priority we do not see coming or chose to ignore. So to put this in perspective, I'll share just a very brief story. A client I worked with took this approach. He executed this plan until something breaks, and then he would go back and reassess his equipment. So the problem with this is that we see this as successful. Unfortunately, it's really expensive and it's reactionary. The problem is you're putting out fires and you can't get ahead of preventative maintenance or long-term capital projects for that matter. So this experience changed his mindset. He understood that he needed to bridge the communication gap between his maintenance department and the board and the business office. So the goal we've developed with Strongsville is to get a longer life out of your equipment versus running it to failure. So this is equivocal to the perfect PM program. What you want to see over time is to increase the amount of preventative maintenance work orders that you have versus reactive work orders that we discussed. And how we would achieve this is by having a preventative maintenance service for Strongsville. So the approach that we want to see is actually called an APLM model. So what you will do is, in the first step, you're assessing what you have, then you can plan to take care of your preventative maintenance, then you go out and do it. But the biggest difference is that you're maintaining what you have versus running it to failure, and by instituting a correct preventative maintenance program, you're able to do that. So the services that we would help you with circumvent these delays. So it's time, expertise, funding, your staff is overloaded, you just don't have the staff or time that's able to go out and collect all of this equipment information and build a custom preventative maintenance program. So what does this include? One of the greatest success factors for an educational institution using a CMS is quality of data for the system. Included in our service, our partner will come onsite to gather key equipment data, and our School Dude team will import it into your account. So this delivers you with ready-to-use turnkey preventative maintenance program. Along with collecting your equipment information, we will build a custom preventative maintenance program based on your specific needs and your specific equipment. So I can go into the proposal if you all would like at this point.
Sure.
Okay. Now, let's see if that will show up for you all. While I was prepared for this, I did print out copies just in case. We may have to do a bit of sharing, but you'll see an overview of the preventative maintenance service along with the proposal on the back.
Sure. Yeah.
So the first line item is data gathering. So this is boots-on-the-ground collecting your equipment information for 803,000 square feet of your district. The second line item is a custom preventative maintenance program that we would create for you. This is a one-time cost, so this is not recurring. Do you all have any questions about the proposal itself? Okay. We'll just keep plugging along, then. How about that? So, you may be thinking at this point, yes, this sounds good, but how is this going to impact my day-to-day and bottom line? So what we know from those 9,000 data points is that the economics come out to reducing your emergency work orders by 60% when you leverage a system to track your day-to-day maintenance and pair it with a PM program. And we know from our data that a PM program can extend the lifecycle of your equipment by 30%. So to put this in perspective, if you have a 20-year-old roof, you can add at least four years to your roof and delay the cost for replacement. This is our best practice model, and this helps you prevent data decay and affords you the ability to have a true maintenance program. Okay. So I've covered a good amount this evening, and I know that there will be questions, so I'd like to open the floor for questions.
So part of the data gathering, when you're talking about data gathering, first of all, we're going to need time to go through this, right?
Absolutely.
So we're not going to solve anything tonight, or just it's a good, we just want a brief overview of it, and then we'll do our research. So the data gathering would be system-by-system review, building-by-building, piece of equipment by equipment, HVAC systems, computer systems, everything that we have, right? And it would essentially, are we talking about mobile equipment, or we're talking about all the equipment for all the buildings?
Sorry, it would not include computer equipment, so it would not include laptops or monitors.
For all the building systems, right?
All of the building systems, yeah.
Interstruction.
That's related to maintenance. Yes.
And what about mobile equipment? Buses, trucks?
That does not include mobile equipment. But you can add that as a preventative maintenance schedule.
Okay.
So even if we would not collect that information, you can still build a preventative maintenance schedule for cutting the grass for the football field, for waxing and stripping the floors as well. So that's part of the benefit of having this service is that it's customizable for you.
How do you add four years onto a 20-year roof? I'm serious.
Yeah.
I can answer that question by exact example. We never took the time in the fall to make sure the roofs were clean, the drains were cleaned, and to take care of the roofs that we had. We actually had done newer roof sections at the high school where we didn't inspect them. There were issues that would have been covered under warranty, but since we never inspected them, they were never taken care of until there was a leak in the building, and then it was too late for the warranty work.
Okay.
That's assuming you act upon what the plan tells you to do.
But we never even bothered to double-check the roofs.
I have a question. How long does this data collection take? A month, a week, a day? I mean, how many people are doing this? What's encompassed with this price tag?
Good question. So from start to finish, from whenever you all hypothetically would choose to go with this service, from start to finish, it's about eight to 12 weeks. And the amount of people that come onsite is really dependent upon the square footage.
To throw a little wrinkle in that, I know two buildings that encompass six of our grades. We have an exact list already. So our brand-new middle school and our high school have got every single piece of equipment listed, changed, date of time, maintenance preventive maintenance pack lists with them. Does that help us, that you don't need to do the data gathering because we have that in documentation form already?
It absolutely may. So what I would want to do is get that list of equipment and compare it with our scope of work to see if there's any overlap, and if there are any gaps in there, we would want to fill those. Yeah. But it could.
I have a question for Steve. Let's say they come up with this list, and I agree that run-to-failure is not a smart way to do business. So preventative is great, but you're going to have to prioritize which ones you tackle first. Do you give it a prioritized list?
You can, yes.
Okay. And is your manning sufficient, a guesstimate, I guess, to handle if they give you a list that's a half a mile long? You know, I guess critical failures first and then intermediate-range type stuff?
We can prioritize it based on your staffing and your schedule as well. Yeah. You can push out preventative maintenance if you need to for a month, a week, whatever it is, depending on the schedule.
You can get to the point where you shoot yourself in a foot.
Right, right.
Is there reporting packaged in there that'll say of the preventative maintenance? So if we wanted Steve to come at the once a quarter and say, here's my preventative maintenance items, there were 782 recommended, we completed 621 of them, 75 were deemed non-critical, so we're moving those out?
Yep.
We can get that kind of reporting?
Yep, absolutely.
So here's the big question. We have School Dude now. What I need to know from Steve is what do we have and what more did you want with the package? And how is that going to save us money long-term? Please. Yeah, I mean, I need to hear it from you because you're the one who's got to live this.
Yeah. So what we have right now is the basic work order package. Somebody is a requester in one of the buildings. They request the work to be done because they already see the roof and the leak roof, or the, I'm sorry, the leak in the roof. And at that point, we're still doing that run-to-failure module. This will get custodians on the roof, maintenance workers on the roof, to go around and check the flashing, check the gutters. That's what's going to save us the money. The other nice thing about this is the preventative maintenance will also convert to work orders. So that way, the data is there to justify how many hours that we're taking, you know, how much time do we take to do the preventative maintenance? What's the benefit of it? What's the cost-effective measures that we had with that? For example, we discussed earlier, busing. Some of our buses have been run to failure, and if we had more data, if we had more preventative maintenance that we had checked off, maybe we could have sold those and got more than just scraps. You know, there's always that equation that comes up of when should you get rid of the asset to recoup some of the costs after you've invested? As of right now, with the product that we have, we just have the basic work orders. We don't have that prescriptive model that helps me find out when we should be getting rid of some of these assets. Did I answer the question?
It does.
So, I mean, this package helps us to be good stewards with the money that we have, and it helps you, you know, keep your arms around what we need. It seems like a good idea. I would like, we have a gentleman on the Facilities Development Committee, Joe Mossberger, and he's, this is what he does for.
Swayzlock.
For Swayzlock. And I'd like you to, just to get an outside opinion, I would like you to run it past him to see what he thinks, not the whole committee, I don't think it's necessary, but just have a conversation with him, see what he thinks, and then the board would like to hear that recommendation from him to see what he thinks. I, you know, I value your opinion, I know you need the help, I know we want to take good care of our assets, we don't want that to happen, but...
And my, and as the board should know, I've been a person who has made the advice, or at least made mention, that we need something to hold people accountable.
I agree.
We need something to be able to say, this person was able to get this much done, this person was able to get this much done, instead of, you know, a paper, let's get back into the 21st century, let's, everybody right now in the maintenance staff has some sort of electronic device. Is this the right fit? I don't know. That's why, kind of, I wanted to make sure you guys got together, but we need something in place.
Does it integrate with our payable system so that you can, if we're purchasing parts for these components, does that stuff fall into this on a work order if you're ordering components, so you could track, like, what's been replaced and what hasn't?
Yeah, it'll be data points to say how much was, how much cost was incurred with the work order.
Okay.
With the preventative maintenance, and that's where it will help build towards that point of, are we keeping our assets to the point past what they're worth? How much are we investing into them to maintain them, to keep them operating? When should we cut ties?
You can also run it on a higher reporting level as well to see how many preventative maintenance work orders you've had for one piece of equipment as well, to decide, look, we just keep throwing good many after bad, we need to replace our HVAC unit as well. So the reporting is pretty spectacular, so you can get down to a really granular level. So this allows you to have the best oversight into your operations as well and better communication between the departments.
Because it's integrated with our work order system and electronics, it's taking the place of those old binders that everybody's used to, where you pull it out, you check it off, you sign it at the bottom, you date it, and you hope when you get it as a manager that somebody didn't lie to you along the way. This is going to give me real-time data. When I tell it to send out the preventative maintenance plan, it's going to go to our workers, it's going to get generated as a work order to the workers, they then have to fill it. If it doesn't get done, I get an alert in the time that I set that that work wasn't done, and then I can have a conversation. So it is that accountability piece, it is better than that binder that we're all used to, where you have to go in and do the check marks. This is bringing our whole system, all of our systems on the 21st century as far as the capability of what data I can collect on it, but also the accountability piece for our workers as well.
Okay. Richard, what are your thoughts?
So the quote is the one-time fee. I'm assuming this is a subscription service. So we have the work order module now, which we're paying annual fees on. Where is the annual fees and the other fees?
You do own the preventative maintenance program at this point, yes.
So we're simply paying, we're simply considering, instead of us doing the data gathering and instead of us doing the PM schedule creation, we want to hire you as a service to come in and get it done and shove it into the system.
Yeah, it's a higher time to value.
Right.
Yeah.
So...
Didn't Roger Riace, didn't we have?
His was paper-based, so this would be all...
And we'd use that same data to help.
Roger, we would use, Roger, you know, created a preventative maintenance plan, but Roger met with Steve and I in the summertime to say, hey, I would really like you to consider finding an electronic system that would do it, because the best I can do, I can tell you what needs to be done, but it's going to be that binder system that Steve mentioned. So what we would look at is, they would, the data collection is completely separate from Roger. Roger would continue to collaborate with School Dude, and I think you had some meetings together, right, with Roger, on what that preventative maintenance schedule would look like, and then they would build the system to take Roger's preventative maintenance system plus their expertise to put that into action.
Another question. Does the system take into account maintenance or replacement that is done on systems?
Yes. Yeah, you can update it as well.
Okay. So you want to go back into another data gathering phase?
Just...
Do you replace a piece of equipment?
Yes.
That's a whole new piece of equipment. Now, who comes and puts that data in?
Well, if it's just one piece of equipment, yeah.
That's why you're paying me, after they come in for the initial data gathering and want you to know that, after that, it's up to me.
Okay.
Now, the nice thing about the system is, when I retire a piece of equipment, it doesn't disappear, it stays in the system so that if it's a piece of equipment that I feel was a good piece of equipment and I want to keep doing business with that company, I have all my data points to say, this is why when I come to you for different proposals. And the exact opposite is also true. If I have a heating unit that just will not work and we're dumping a bunch of money into it, I know I can kind of red-flag that company and we just don't do business with them anymore. Right now, to be honest with you, without this type of data, we're kind of shooting in the dark. We're going for what's the best deal without having any kind of reputation built up and on with just us, relying on some other outside sources to give us information, and kind of at the mercy of salesmen sometimes, which their process is sell.
Right.
My process is going to be, okay, you can sell, but here's the data that I'm using to buy, and that's what I would do.
Richard, I interrupted you, so did you have more questions?
Just a couple. So, to be, you know, what I'd want, and I don't need an answer today, Steve, but it looks like what we're considering is saying, this is a need, we want to get it done quickly, we want to get it done professionally, so we're going to hire outside resource. But we have all of this data currently. Most of this data is probably not centralized, it's not easily accessible, but we have the manuals, we have the books, we have the existing service people. So I want to compare a risk-reward between getting it done, getting it done quickly and efficiently versus doing it over time with our existing people. It's the one-time thing, for me, the thing is going to see the, is to see the plan on how it's going to be maintained. How are you going to continue? Because you said eight weeks?
Eight to 12 weeks.
And then they all go bye-bye. And then if we're not using it and if we're not updating it, it becomes antiquated and it becomes as useless as our binders that we can't find when we need them. So that's kind of where I'm going to want to see the conversation, that $32,000 is money well-spent and that we would break even or save money over time.
Do you mind if I answer? Okay. So we have a dedicated team that will be working with Steve and his team as well, not just initially, but over time. So we have a support team that will, I guess in the best sense of term, hold the team accountable and go through, you know, bi-annually, saying, this is how many preventative maintenance work orders you have completed, and this is what your goal is. So we work with the teams as well to do that. Your ROI for having a true preventative maintenance program is going to be around $50,000 to $60,000 a year in efficiency gains and avoiding catastrophic emergencies.
The value that I see is having the expertise into creating the preventative maintenance and having that balance. If you do too much preventative maintenance, there's a cost to that and you're overdoing it.
Right.
And if you don't do enough preventative maintenance, you're just doing break-fix all the time and finding that balance there. We have in-house people. Where's the benefit of going to School Dude?
Right.
Versus, you know, our HVAC people know, and if we tap them, they'll tell us, you know, I think we can improve our PM here, et cetera. So I'm trying to understand where we're going to get the bang for the buck by using an outside resource.
Yeah, that's a very fair question. So two things. One, it's quality of data. So these are experts that do this, this is their profession, where they come in and collect that equipment information. And the second is time, is, you know, we're talking today because you need help with this, and so just reflecting back and maybe not to be too forward, is that, you know, it hasn't been done by this point. So maybe help is needed. So I hope that that's not too forward to say.
Going back to the individual, I think we have so many diverse systems that you'd be going to, you know, possibly seven or eight HVAC system manuals and different manufacturers, probably at least, and that would be daunting without...
But we're not just talking about HVAC.
I know, we're talking about...
Talking about electrical panels, we're talking about plumbing, we're talking about hydronics, we're talking about roofs, we're talking about a lot of different pieces of puzzle.
And these are the same guys that are doing the maintenance every day. When are they going to have time to be doing inventories?
Well said.
Okay, well, why don't we...
I think this is a good idea.
I had a question. Is the pricing of that 803,000 square feet, does that encompass every single building in the district right now? That your scope of work is all, so as to George's point, we already know what's in our brand-new buildings, there is no data to gather, we can just say, here it is.
Yeah.
So in essence, we could say the scope of work is literally half of that.
Yeah, you could do that.
So then that would be reflective in the price? It would be cut in half, in essence?
Absolutely.
Or at least, and great point, Jane, if we can give you that data, that information, the black and white, maybe it wouldn't be half, maybe it'd be, you know, two-thirds or maybe somewhere between, so that your folks can data-point that into the system for us.
She said half.
Well...
Okay, I'm leaving it alone. But Jane made a great point.
That's if you remove 400,000 square feet, yes. Yeah.
But it is possible, to Rich's point, that we could enter our own data to save that money, or is that not something that's feasible?
You can, but it's, you have to determine, do you have enough time to do that?
It's more expertise, I mean, one, it's time, and two, it's expertise.
Yeah, it is. I mean, creating your own preventative maintenance schedule is not easy.
Well, the schedule is something different than somebody walking around going, okay, this is, you know, we have a Carrier furnace and the model number is XYZ, and, you know, I don't know how much expertise you need to have somebody do that, but I must be missing something.
I would say to Duke's point, what they can do in eight to 12 weeks would realistically take me, I would say, 24 to 36 with my current staff. Because any time that there is an emergency, because remember, we're still putting out fires before this can take effect, they'd be being called off that and going on, for example, John Promozic, he's kind of my HVAC guru at this point, he could be doing inventory over at Whitney, something happens at Chapman, inventory goes out the window because we need heat, we need cooling over at Chapman, and that day's lost. And who knows when that day's going to come back? So that's the other portion that we're investing in as well. I can get the data to make educated decisions as fast as possible. So...
So if you could take a look at the data we have, so you could revise your proposal, and then at some point, we can put it back on the agenda.
Right.
And in the meantime, if we have any other questions, we'll get them to Cameron, Cameron will get them to you, and we'll make a decision there. and we'll, uh, we'll, we'll make a decision there. I don't think we have, this sounds good.
Sounds like a plan.
All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you all.
And as we clean up there, we're gonna switch gears and Steve's gonna stay up there to give a highlight reel of what was accomplished over the summertime with some of our maintenance projects.
All right. So I know when, when school lets out, students go home and they think the school gets shut down and of course, it's, you know, cause they're the center of the universe, nothing happens at that point. But unfortunately, that's whenever the maintenance and custodial crews, they kick it into high gear to get it ready for the next round of students coming up. So what you're gonna be seeing here is a reflection of the majority of this, the bulk of the presentation is gonna be the maintenance department and what they've done, the project completion. Of course, the custodians, I don't wanna leave them out. They were inside the building, making sure that the furniture was removed, the floors were cleaned, the carpets were swept, the walls were washed down, furniture loaded back in and ready for another group of students. But this does highlight a lot of what the maintenance crew has done this summer. So just a brief overview. Everything from electrical work, landscaping, playground equipment repair, all the way through to concrete, light replacement, of course, routine building cleaning and plumbing. So all of these things happened in those three short months when students were gone and then they come back. So just some pictures that are going here. The playground at Chapman, the, the posts were rusting. We had a, we were able to have a company come in and strip those down, repaint those. They look great. We're replacing some platforms at Chapman, making the whole playground up to code. The one that was of great importance because there was a plywood barrier up at Maraski, that plywood barrier is now gone. The whole playground has had a facelift. Some of the pieces of equipment that were not to code, and just plain scary, are gone.
And the kids' favorite spot.
That roller slide, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm going on record. I don't know, that's scary.
We visited that slide.
So that's all been replaced, everything was painted. Again, posts that were rusting were stripped and powder-coated. Just a really nice job was done. There was a, a bridge that was falling apart that, that was removed and some, they're called little leap pads, were put in. Now, everything looks good, it's safe for the kids to play. And I know we've already gotten feedback how people are enjoying the playground and liking the improvements that were made there. Also, I don't know if you knew, we owned a swamp right outside that other picture. That's been eliminated. While the, the crew was there fixing and repairing, we took a day and explored why that area was always filled with water. What we ended up finding was the drain had collapsed. So we were able to access that, repair that, and then eventually, of course, this will all be covered over, but it is not retaining water anymore. So the swamp is-
You drained the swamp?
Drain the swamp, I knew it was coming. I knew it was coming.
Is that gravel, Steve?
Yes.
Are you gonna put dirt over it and grass?
Yeah, we will. Uh, also, some concrete work was done at Chapman. We had some reports come back saying that the, the concrete was too heaved, it was a, a trip hazard. So those were busted up, removed. Our crew was able to go in on a nice, hot summer day, go in and do all of the concrete work there at Chapman, all the way through that walkway back to the baseball field and the access road there. Also, there was some done at Maraski. A, a tree had caused, the, the root system had caused the concrete slabs to heave. Again, busted that up, got rid of that tree, the roots and, or roots, depending on where you're from. And that's been eliminated and a new concrete pad was put in. Also, at the high school, at one point, when the high school was first done, there were trees that were in that little island there between Pakistan Stadium and the high school. Those trees have long since died with all the salt and everything else. Once the snow gets pushed up and salt gets broadcasted. So what we were doing was basically mulching dirt. So what was decided is that we would remove that and put concrete there to make it a true island without having any kind of mulching or anything like that. Also, the guys were able to cut out some sections of the curb that were falling apart. So when you're there for the tailgate tomorrow, you can see all of that hard work and it's, it's a much better island, it's a much better traffic break there than it was there before. Also, at the high school, some new boilers were put in. We had an old boiler that was leaking and they actually don't even make that size anymore because it's so inefficient to have that much water in a tank. So what we were able to do is buy some energy-efficient tanks that are able to handle the workload there and we were able to in-house put that in there and get that working and they're operating very well. Also, as part of the fiber conversion, we had to put some backer boards. This one was one that kinda caught the, the crew by surprise, but they buckled down and removed all of the electrical fixtures and electrical panels and boxes and brought it all up to code so we can have that conversion and have our schools updated. Also, the flagpoles at Maraski, Whitney, Surar, and I've been building here, some of them were in poor condition. And those were stripped, those were painted and brought back to a, a very good condition, so. Also, up in the, what's been to, team, the, our term, the junior lot, some lighting was put up there. This is the new lot by the stadium. So there were complaints that it was, you know, it was very dark in the morning and, and that's because it was very dark in the morning, so it was a legitimate complaint. Now we have some lights there and they are energy, energy-efficient LED lights that were installed. And again, we were able to do that in-house. There were, the gymnasium wall at Kinsner was malfunctioning. What was able to be done is it was able to be repaired, which is very, repair is always better in that case than replace because it was up in the air. But again, that was able to be done. And also, new shingles were put in on the roof at Surar. The entryway was looking not as pristine as it needed to be. Guys were able to go out there and re-tile that roof. And it looks very nice now as an entryway. Also, a new air conditioner was installed, so the Whitney Gym now has air conditioning. And this is an example of what we have been able to do with some of our expertise in-house. This saved us a lot of money just buying the part and not having to pay for the labor. So we not only have great workers here, we also have skilled workers that can help us as we go forward and save money and do a lot of work in-house. They also did a lot of landscaping. If the pictures are bad, it's because the photographer's horrible, I apologize. But our buildings looked great. We had nothing but positive feedback, not only from yourselves, but also parents, teachers, principals, superintendent, who went around and, and justify all of so, I went around too and just made sure everything was as good as it could be for the start of that school year because that's all important when kids are walking into that building, making sure everything looks good as they're, as they're stepping foot in. So just some pictures of all of our buildings. Which leads me to the second part of the presentation of what are the goals for the business department for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year as far as this aligns to our Strongsville City Schools twenty-twenty plan. So just to highlight, the first, first goal is to develop and execute a capital improvement project list. We have leftover bond issue money and capital improvement, or permanent improvement. Part of my goal this year, and what I've already started to do, is talk to the building custodians and principals, get a list of needs and wants, start to price those out and start to look at what are some commonalities, what can we get economy to scale, what is actually needed at this point and try and get the best bang for our buck with the money that we have left over and, and get our buildings to the point where we would like them to be. The second one is using the automated system to create an inventory. That process has already been started, I'm getting training right now from School Dude. Right now, we really don't have a, a comprehensive inventory system of, of what our assets are. This will do everything from desks in a classroom to consumables, the toilet paper, the paper towels. It will give me more data, what are we taking in, what are we using on an annual basis so that we're not doing guesswork of what our expenses are gonna be at the end of the year so I can present a more precise budget when everything's all said and done based on what we've consumed. As, with that is also the facilities maintenance plan, which you've heard a lot about tonight. And that all will align to this thirty-year plan that we have in place. So combining the inventory system with preventive maintenance plan, work order system, just integrating all that under one umbrella so we can be as efficient as possible. Provide ongoing training for our custodial and maintenance staff, exploring what licensures we can get so that we don't have to hire a third party all the time to do the, some of the routine maintenance or some of the seasonal maintenance, what is available to our, our current staff. Complete a cost-benefit analysis of hiring the SRO at the middle school for the eighteen-nineteen school year. Some of those conversations have already been started. Just going through and, and seeing what is gonna be the cost on our end. We all know that we wanna be safe and secure, just working and ironing out the details at this point. Conduct a feasibility study of renovating the buildings to include a secure vestibule, much like we did at the high school, or if you remember at the high school, once you're in those front doors, welcome to Strongsville High. Now, you walk to the front doors, welcome to the main office. So setting up that kind of model at all of our buildings because it does not exist in all of our buildings at this point. Once somebody gains access, whether they come to the office or not, is really we leave it up to the person coming in. I wanna go through and create and look at the study and how much it would be to not give the person that option, that they have to check in, that they have to go through a series of checkpoints before they get access to any other part of our buildings. Analyze the work order completion data. Right now, I've been working with our maintenance to close out some work orders. The reality of it has been, it was not stressed as well as it should have been to complete the work orders to get that data loaded in there so I can start seeing data points. That is, that culture has changed and that's known that when you're done with that, I want that to be completed so I can start looking at what work orders were done this month. I can start then to present some data to you about what has been done, what should be done, and what will be done in the future. And then underway of researching a district-wide energy savings plan from lights, we have consortium pricing for energy, electricity, gas, really just looking at the systems that we have, everything from lighting to HVAC to plumbing, to see what can we do to improve our, our building envelope to be as energy-efficient as possible. And those are the goals that I have for this year.
It's a good set of goals. Pretty brave putting number two on there when we haven't even approved it yet, I'm liking that.
We'll get it done. We'll get it done.
No, that's good.
See, I, I'd compliment you. I, I got a chance to go around to several of the buildings on Convocation Day and they look better than I've ever seen them. Particularly the front of the high school. I can remember not too long ago, when we had to pull weeds out in front of the signs out there because it was neglected and let, let go to seed and everything, and this looks a lot better. And if you have a professional environment like that for our young people, I think they tend to treat them, the facilities better and take care of them better. So good on you and your people for all that.
And I'll compliment you on the same thing. Richard and Carl both know that every year I used to go bananas. I mean, fact that we can't have mulch, we can't pull weeds, we can't trim, you know, for the first day of school of, for the love of God, the first day of school, make our buildings look, you know, perfect. And this was the first year, so good job.
Excellent. I do have one question for you personally. As you transition into this role, I just wanna, you know, you're, you're doing an outstanding job, right? So we, we're seeing really some great things. Are you, are you getting the, the, the training? Is there groups that you're associating with? Are you, you know, are you getting professional development to make sure that you're, you know, you're staying ahead of the curve on this? Cause you're doing a fantastic job. We've taken an enormous step forward. I wanna make sure that we continue to do it and I think, you know, good people are worth investing in. Maybe, you know, everyone should get the training that they need and I just wanna make sure that if there's anything out there that you think would help you do your job or training that you need or whatever you need, you let us know and just continue to do it.
There's some really good conferences in Honolulu.
There's some, there's some real cheap ones in some parts of the world right now.
I'm already-
Zanesville.
Zanesville, yes.
I'm a member already of OAS, of OASBO. And they have a lot of resources for building managers, operation managers. OSC Consortium Pricing, I've gone to some of those meetings and met with other building managers in the area.
Excellent.
I'm on their listserv. We ask questions and bounce back and forth on a Google Doc. So I have access to all the questions that have ever been asked and all of them going forward, so.
Perfect, okay, great. I just wanna make sure that was happening. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. The last presentation we wanted to share is to kinda give an overview of where we've been with the Strongsville's twenty-twenty plan, which again, is our five-year vision to become a premier district in the region and the state and the action steps that we've done towards that. And so we wanna take a look at what we did last year first and after tonight, we'll put this on the website so it's available for our community to take a look at. But as we know, our twenty-twenty plan is broken down to the three goals, Mr. Neso, that you mentioned every board meeting. And under those, we have overarching objectives and specific action steps within those objectives, which Steve kinda went through some of those in his presentation. So the first area of academic achievement and growth, we looked at our four objectives. We did measure our attainment of each of those objectives and as you could see, we had an eighty percent success rate for all of our action steps which were a part of our two thousand sixteen-seventeen plan. Again, somebody that wants to see the details of how did we do on every action step, that will be available online. What this is saying is for each objective, how did we do? For, so for example, objective one, which was ensuring students are college and career-ready after four years of high school, there was one action step there that said we were gonna benchmark data of how our students were gonna do in kindergarten through twelfth grade. We did that, we completed it, we benchmarked, set the foundation for the future. So we completed that with a hundred percent accuracy and then it goes down from there where you could see the level of accuracy, we hit the other three objectives. So all told, academic achievement and growth, we achieved eighty percent of what we set out to accomplish. And this set the foundation for where we are and where we wanna go and what we wanna do for the seventeen-eighteen school year, which I'll talk about here shortly. Looking at financial prudence, altogether, we hit eighty-five percent, had an eighty-five percent success rate with, with what we were looking at. As you can see, Steve has addressed adequately number six, where it talks about developing a capi- or a comprehensive capital improvement and maintenance plan. That was our lowest area of success last year. Hidden right above sixty percent success with the action steps there. We've got some great headway interaction going with what Steve has got moving forward for the, the seventeen-eighteen version of the plan.
I'm betting on a hundred percent on that.
That's right, that's right. And then finally, with community engagement, eighty-four percent, we met eighty-four percent of the targets that we set. One of the, one of the areas that we are taking a focus on for, for next year is the alumni program. Dan's got a clear plan for what that's gonna look like. And we switched gears a little bit with our customer service program and some of the training we're doing for our staff there, so those continue to be in the works. So if you remember, the first year was more anecdotal data. We spent a lot of time this past year looking at how do we make the action steps and the criteria measurable to see exactly how are we progressing? And then we were able to do that this year and continue that on to next year. So that's a brief overview of how we did in sixteen-seventeen. Again, the details will be available online, but if there's any questions from the board on sixteen-seventeen, I can answer them at this time. All right. So let's take a look at some of the highlights. Steve went into detail about what his department is gonna focus on. There's a, there's a lot, again, these are the goals and objectives. The goals remain the same from last year, the board approved these last meeting. We did tweak the objectives and underneath each of these objectives, each of these ten objectives, there's specific action steps. So I just wanted to highlight a, a few of these. There's more action steps to the plan, but just to give some ones that may be of interest to the community. First, one of the things we'll be doing this year is taking a comprehensive look at our secondary course offerings. We've noticed over the years, we've added a lot of courses to the middle school, we've added a lot of courses to the high school, but sometimes we found now that they don't align and they don't match. So a good example is we have medical detectives or robotics as, as one of our STEM classes at the, at the middle school. What do they go into the high school? Well, there's a pre-med class, yeah, there's a pre-engineering class, but there's really not a clear path for kids that enjoy the robotics, enjoy the medical detectives. We have an art-music production course that is at the middle school but doesn't have any sister courses at the high school to continue on. So we need to look at, although it's been great, we've added all this stuff, we wanna make sure kids have a pathway to continue on if they're interested. Secondly, we wanna take a look at the, and build consistent extracurricular opportunities at the elementary school. So years ago, when I was- So, years ago, when I was an elementary principal, there were opportunities for supplementals, where we had different, we had drama club, we had student council, we had science club, we had different clubs for kids to get involved beyond the school day. At the elementary schools now, it's hit and miss. We have one supplemental for the elementary schools, and that's all to be used for student council. Other than student council, it's at the direction of the principal, so maybe some have a Spanish club, maybe some have young rembrants, maybe some have a builders' club that they do. We feel that our kids should have great opportunities within the school day and outside of the school day, to expand their horizons, and that's something we want to take a look at. Number three, a large percentage of our students go to college after graduation. We usually average between ninety to ninety-three percent, somewhere in that range. We need to put a greater focus this coming year on our students that are entering the workforce, that ten to fifteen percent maybe that go straight from high school into the workforce, and building collaborations with our local business community to make sure that they've got the developed skills and work habits necessary to meet the needs and the demands of our business community. So, we'll be developing and reinvigorating a business advisory council to help look at what skills are needed, and how can we implement those in our K to twelve program. Next, we're gonna take a look at our school calendar. Our school calendar's up for review, the next two-year calendar. We've had a lot of feedback from community and staff as to why do we start about the same time as every other school district, but we end about a week and a half later in June. So, that's something we're gonna take a more in-depth look at, rather than just kind of rolling a similar calendar from one year to the next.
Please do.
We will, we will. Aaron gave a wonderful presentation to our PTA Council this morning, about how we've holistically changed our, our writing system, our, our writing instruction K to twelve, whether it's with the new adoption six to twelve, or the new approach to writing, Lucy Cawkins is what it's called, a writer's workshop model in grades K to five. So, that will be a large focus, and I think I've said publicly numerous times, if, if somebody asks me to pick the one area that we as a district need to improve upon, it's writing instruction and the ability of our, our students to write effectively, and I feel that we've got a great plan in place to do that. And as Vicki has shared, to expand maker spaces throughout the district, we have them in Kinzner, the middle school, and the high school, there is a plan to roll those out in the four remaining elementary schools by the end of the year. There's other action steps for academic achievement and growth, but that's a good highlight for this evening. And then, yes, Mr. Grozen?
The maker spaces are being funded by the Strongsville Educational Foundation, correct?
The district and the Strongsville Education Foundation.
Together.
Together, but the Strongsville Education Foundation, up to this point, Rough Ballpark has donated twenty-seven thousand dollars to the maker spaces.
These volunteers just doing good work for our kids.
So, we, we got twenty thousand dollars from GPD for the high school, and they are loving all of the equipment and tools that we were able to purchase with that, and then twenty-seven thousand went to the middle school and elementary schools from the foundation. Couldn't have done that without them. Yeah. Looking at financial prudence, some of the highlights, George and Jenny will be working on looking at an, an integrated HR and finance system. We have an HR system, we have a finance system, but the two do not speak to one another. So, when you look at multiple data entry, that will be a huge benefit, and George, did you want to speak to that at all?
In the finance systems from the eighties. So, looking to upgrade.
It is a doc.
Just a little outdated.
So, do we have an HR dude? Or do that?
At least it doesn't have a floppy disk that you have to put in. About a step above that. So, we are gonna be taking a look at that, as George presented in the spring last year, and we'll continue to work on a comprehensive wellness program, to look at how proactively we can make sure that our workforce is taking care of themselves, they're happy, they're healthy, as well as maintain some of the insurance rates that we've enjoyed over the last few years. Continuing to work on the development and implementation of a board finance committee, and using that as a vehicle to look at some cost reduction or revenue generating strategies is on the list to work on this year. And four, five, and six, Steve did an excellent job sharing those, about how his department will be working on those, to ensure the financial prudence of our district with our facilities. Finally, with community engagement, we sent out a survey to our staff and to our community last spring about how are we communicating, what's working, what's not, and the most popular thing that we found out, as Dan shared previously, was they want to know more about district events. So, we're gonna continue to look at that. We, we, Dan sent out, I think on Monday or Tuesday of this week, here's the events for September, you can take a look at. We always want to remind our community and our staff and parents, download the Strongsville City Schools app, you can follow different buildings, you can follow the calendars, and it's a one-stop shop for that. But one of the things we're exploring is, how can we continue to promote events? We've taken a look at, you know, we publish and print and mail certain publications. There is the idea of a Strongsville City Schools Community Calendar, which lists all of the upcoming events, for those people that still like the paper version of the calendar, that's an option, or other ideas that we're talking about. Going on with that, getting our students prepared either for college or career, continuing to explore, career exploration options, and working with our database of community partners for internship opportunities, where kids can actually get out there in the field, see what they like, what they don't like, and so they have a pathway after, after high school. Jenny and Dan and the Strongsville Positive Outreach Team, we're gonna continue to work this year. I'm sure they've got other events up their sleeve, but the great and treat will continue to be on the docket, the Family First Night, the delivery of signs to our graduating seniors, some of the positives that really have been a great bridge between the community and the school district will continue on this year. Number four, one of the things that's important to me is to have that connection with our students, to hear directly from them how we're doing, and what we can improve on, and what we're doing, or being successful at. We're creating a student liaison group that's gonna meet with me, and, and talk about those things that, that I just mentioned, to be an ongoing group. I've, I've gone out and talked to students in the past years, but it's been more representative groups from the building, and it's a one-shot deal, let's talk and take notes and see what we can do, but this will be a more of a standing group. We are researching and getting close, right, Mr. Faust, to making a determination of having a district-sponsored apparel outlet. We're debating whether it's gonna be only online. A lot of the companies we talked to, they have an online apparel that is usually open three times a year, once before school starts, once during the holiday season, and once during the springtime, as well as, do we want to have a traditional bookstore at the high school, and how would that work? So, we've spoken to our, our local vendors, we've spoken to some other vendors that provide this service, and so, we'll be meeting here in the near future, with the goal of having something selected and ready to go before the holiday season. Elementary nights, which I'm very excited about, so this is, you know, one of the things that's great about my job, is I can say, hey, I want to have elementary nights at the football games, Dan and Andy figure out what that means and what we're gonna do. So, what they did is phenomenal, and it started today. So, every, every Friday home football game, we're gonna feature in elementary school. So, tomorrow is Whitney Elementary School. So, what that means is, all the Whitney Elementary students got a little flyer that said, hey, if you bring this flyer to the game, you get in for free with, if your parent pays, Young Hubs, your parent has to pay. Coach Serino, our cheerleaders, and some of our football players went down to Whitney this afternoon to do a little pep assembly to get the kids excited. The pictures are on Facebook to share, you know, kind of the, how they were excited and the work that they did to get them to the game. And then, really what I think is cool is, at the football game, Scott and Dan have done a featured video at Whitney that's gonna play on the big screen, about what Whitney Elementary School's all about. The kids, if they're interested, could be on the field to form the tunnel that the players come out of at the start of the game. And Dan, am I missing anything else?
Three different honorary positions that students are gonna be voting tomorrow, selected by the-
Yeah, so three honorary positions, I think we've got like a drum major?
Band member, PA announcer, and team captain.
There you go. So, it's gonna be just a great event, and then we're looking forward to the other four elementary schools that'll follow throughout the year. So, that's, that's a new addition that I think is, is really cool. And then, seventh, we talked about a distinguished alumni program. We started working on that last year, didn't get to put it all the way through, but it's planned, it's April- Seventeenth. April seventeenth will be the first recurrence of the distinguished alumni recognition program, Dan's leading that, and I know he talked to me earlier this evening, that the application for possible nominees will go out in October. So, be on the lookout for that, if you know any Strongsville grads that you feel should be recognized, that haven't been recognized in the past, that will start in October. And that kind of gives an overview of where we're going with community engagement this year, and that summarizes what I wanted to share on the 2020 Plan, unless there's questions.
I have a question, but I have a comment or a suggestion for you. You know, we have had some, a very good relationship with The Post, and I'm sure that you could work with Terry to get those, highlight the school district events every week, because people in Strongsville read that paper cover to cover. That's an excellent place to get the information out. So, if there was just a little-
Unlike some of the other rags that are about-
Yeah, some of the other, other outlets that are out there that are, that are not as informed or professional. Yeah. So, I, I would say maybe work with Terry and see if we can get like, you know, I know Cameron puts his blurb in there, but we could probably have a few column inches there and put that stuff in a condensed form.
Terry's shaking his head. Thank you, Terry.
Hey, Cameron, I had a question. The student liaison group that you're gonna, is that all grade levels, or just high school or middle school, or what?
We were thinking middle school, high school.
And about how many, like, ten or?
Yeah, we, usually ten to twelve is a manageable group, and we, you know, we're, we're looking for a good representative sample. I, I mean, you know, when we went last time, what we shared with the principals is, give us a representative sample, we want to hear from all student groups and, and interests. So, yeah, well, I think our goal is to get that up and running, or membership by the end of September, and get that started in October.
Thank you, sounds good.
Thank you. And that concludes my discussion items, so we thank you for, to the board for the attention on those number of presentations, and with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Brechner, who's gonna give his report for the month.
Mr. Brechner night here.
That's right. He's got a jacket on, so-
He's got a jacket and a tie, looks all cleaned up.
The, the item that's in the agenda for tonight, Exhibit A, is for the Ace Business Solution, this is our copier company. As of right now, we are just doing a, a maintenance program. You can see in the details there, as you, as you read through, the prices have not changed. I met with the representatives from Ace, and they're gonna honor the prices we've had. They also wanted, and they, and they put it in there, we do have some older printers and copiers that are no longer serviceable because of the age, they cannot get parts anymore. This is something I'll be reviewing with them. As of now, we own all of our equipment, and we don't lease any of it. So, that'll be something else we'll be looking at, but for right now, just for your discussion, and also your purview there, is the maintenance agreement that we will have with Ace.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, thank you.
Jenny Pelco with the Human Resources Report for the month.
Good evening, everyone. Under Human Resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Under C1, I have non-certificated reductions in force. Under C2, we have several resignations for non-certificated staff, and one resignation for a non-certificated supplemental contract. Under C3, I have the following appointments for certificated staff. And continuing under C3, appointments for certificated substitutes, followed by appointments for non-certificated staff members, and appointments for certificated testing consultants, appointments for certificated supplemental contracts, and certificated supplemental contract appointments that are paid upon completion. Under C4, I have changes in hours of non-certificated staff. Under C5, salary upgrades of certificated staff. Under C6, two stipends for certificated staff that helped with our extended school year, one stipend for non-certificated staff for our auditorium, stage, and lighting crew, and one stipend for our webmaster for Kinzner. Under C7, have two unpaid medical leaves for non-certificated staff. And under C8, several medical leaves for non-certificated staff. And finally, under C9, we have our volunteer chaperones. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
No questions.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Excellent. That brings us to consent calendar. All items with an asterisk get voted on in one vote. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? I'm wondering, it's an odd question, but, for George. Since Richard's enlisted as a volunteer, should we draw that one out, or? Probably not.
There's no compensation.
Okay, all right. So then, any discussion? No, let's have a vote.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item eight, I'll need a, it's a motion to take an item from the table. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. This was a, the wellness policy, which we tabled at the last meeting, and this will remove from the table, so that we can then vote upon it, but we need a vote to take it off the table, so, George?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
This is the second read, third reading is waived, this is the second reading for the wellness program, which we just took off the table. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion on this policy?
Yeah, I have a question, why are we waiving the third, third reading?
The reason we're requesting waiving the third reading is, we've reviewed this one multiple times. It came from the Wellness Committee, we reviewed it then, then it was asked to go back to the Policy Committee, we changed exactly what the board had suggested to change, and then a little bit more was suggested, a few other pieces, so it was just the thought that we as the board have reviewed it multiple times.
Okay. So, and I'll just make a couple of quick comments. We did review it, and in the committee, and in the copy we brought to the board as a whole, we wanted it to be a wellness policy. So, we spent a lot of time making sure that all the language in it had to do with wellness versus getting far-reaching, whether it be licensure or anything else. So, we, we concentrated on the purpose of the policy, to make it simple and straightforward. We also spent some time making sure that whatever we put in that policy is something that we're going to follow and can follow. So, the, the few changes we made were with that, and I know it'll, I know it would hearten Duke, but we took any language out that was, just a lot of blather would be the easiest way to put it. We took a lot of that out, and we made sure it, it had what we needed, but if there was a lot of things that were more aspirational about food and FDA, et cetera, we simplified it to making sure we follow the, the rules, whether they're state or federal, and kept it at that.
Sounds good, Richard.
And we also took out the provision in about using physical fitness as a punishment, that was removed, correct?
Correct, that was removed. We have plenty of language and plenty of, of controls to make sure anyone isn't abusing a child, but, you know, the easy example is, if you're late for a sport, and the coach says, run three laps, it's okay for the coach to say, run three laps. It's not okay for the coach to say, run a thousand laps.
Excellent. Any other discussion? George, take a vote.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We also have first reading on the gifted and education identification, field and other district-sponsored trips, and career advising.
One comment, Mr. Neso, on the field and other district-sponsored trips. I had some discussion with the superintendent over this policy, and I believe we're gonna have to have some changes in it, before I would support it.
I agree as well. I have some recommendations as well that we can all discuss. That brings us to Board of Education, other. I do have a few others. Does anybody have any? No, I just wanted to, I have one.
I just wanted to announce again that the Strongsville Athletic Boosters are sponsoring the 2017 Car Raffle. What is different, and I think fun this year, is there are only three thousand tickets. What is different and I think fun this year is there are only 3,000 tickets. They're Willy Wonka golden tickets. Get your golden ticket now. There are only 3,000. There will only ever be 3,000. The majority of those tickets are currently in the hands of student athletes, and they're selling them directly. They're also available at the high school and the middle school. They will be available at tomorrow's football game, but unlike previous years, I anticipate they're going to sell out well before the car raffle. So, if you would like to win a 2017 Chevy Trax with all the, the fun new stuff like broadband and Wi-Fi, if someone approaches you to buy a ticket, you should buy it right away. That's it.
And then I wanted to remind everyone that the Strongsville Historical Society's Annual Harvest Festival is September 23rd and 24th, and they are again having their annual cow pie raffle, so get your cow pie raffle tickets. The winner gets $1,000, so that's a nice thing, and we've had several prominent Strongsville people win that in the past. And so, come out. It's a good time, and it's free for you to attend, and they have activities for kids as well as grownups.
Excellent. I wanted to bring up, first, I wanted to ask everybody to keep the, our countrymen in Houston and Florida and Virgin Islands in their prayers for the devastation that's going on down there right now. And second, a more fun note, tomorrow night is the tailgate party before the football game, which is always a lot of fun. And if you haven't been to one of the two away games, you'll see an entirely different football team. We played Hudson last week, and I saw fear in their eyes, and they were the number seven-rated team. And by the end of the game, our team was standing strong, and they were gassing, hanging on for dear life. And if we'd had one more quarter, we'd be the seventh-ranked team right now in the state. But come out and watch the football team. It's really exciting. It's really fun to watch. Check out the tailgate party. It'll be a lot of fun before the game, all kinds of exhibits and fun and all kinds of stuff going on. So, if you get the chance, please attend. Do we have any other, others? Nope. With that, I'm happy to say there will be no executive session tonight. It's been prohibited and crossed out. I think that brings us to adjournment. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion about adjournment, other than the excitement about adjournment?
Go try.
Yeah, go try.
Yeah.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozen?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 8:13.